Okay, welcome everybody. Thank you for all coming. This is great. How come there's no donuts or cookies?
I know, right? Lunch.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm calling the meeting to order June 18th, 2018 at 1:00. And we're going to have our opening ceremonies, which is a moment of reflection. Wait, moment of reflection. Wait, wait, wait. And a pledge of allegiance led by Karen.
Okay. Ready to begin. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a virgin justice for all.
Roll call. Ms. Snell?
Here.
Ms. Metoye?
Here.
Ms. Flure?
Here.
Mr. Davenport?
Here.
Ms. Franco?
Here.
Ms. Black?
Here.
Ms. Yelsey?
Here.
Dr. Navarro?
Here.
Okay, so adoption of agenda. Move adoption of agenda as presented.
Flagger.
Okay, so the adoption of agenda was moved by Ms. Flure and seconded by Mr. Davenport. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to move on to community input. No cards. No cards. Oh, so now we're going to move on to you.
Yes, and I'm going to pass it off to you. No.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here, Board, and sit here and work with our team on this study session regarding math. As you know, this has been a two-year process to go from kindergarten now through eighth grade on instructional materials adoptions, and some other issues have come up as the team has been working. So I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Drake.
Well, good afternoon, President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro. And you'll see, we have a little bit of a different group up in front here, so I do want to say hello to the executive cabinet that's in the crowd and thank them for giving up their seats to this distinguished group up here. So, thank you for having us today. This is an important day for us, and just to provide a little background into why today and this late in the school year, one of the tasks you've afforded to me and to this group of teachers here in Newport Mesa is to go out and find materials that are going to best align and meet the needs and expectations of our state standards. And that takes time. And with those adoptions and with those deep analysis of materials, it also gives us an opportunity to step back and really take an inventory of where we are as a district in relation to not only materials and alignment and instruction, but also structurally. Where are we in making sure that we're providing the best for kids? You do recall at this past Tuesday's board meeting, you approved materials for 6-8 adoption, and we are grateful for that. But fast forward to today, that motion by the board has put us in a position to have a really serious discussion today about our pathways, because those two go hand in hand. So if you're being asked that question of why now, there are certain things that had to occur for us to get to this point, to have this discussion. So moving forward, there are really two questions that we've been grappling with over the past two years as we've been going through these adoptions. And that second question, more specifically about the last 15 to 12 to 15 months we've been grappling with. But first off, you know, what secondary mathematics curriculum resources best support students in secondary mathematics? And then also, depending on what path or what materials we do adopt, is there a need, and if there is a need, is there a way to create improvements to pathways while still giving access to those higher levels of math in our high schools that currently exist, without denying anybody access to that? So those are questions we've been grappling with for the last 15 to 16 months. And so we're here today to talk about some potential answers to that. Along that way, these are four points that we continually come back to and discuss and work through. That first one is an important one to understand. Things have changed in relation to what we are expecting kids to be able to do with what we're teaching them in the classrooms. And it has a lot to do, if not everything, to do with preparing them for college and/or career, not just being able to regurgitate the information that we give them, but to be able to actually use it. The standards are different, especially in mathematics. You've heard me talk a lot about the shifts, the focus, coherence, and rigor. It's not the same in math classrooms as when we were in the classroom, where we were oftentimes given the algorithm or the equation and shown how to put the numbers into those equations to get the right answer. With the idea of the common core standards that are now our expectations, in order to meet those, we have to make sure that kids understand math at deep levels, not just the procedural plugging in numbers to algorithms, but the conceptual, how and when to use it, why it is the way it is in mathematics, and then be able to take all of that information and flexibly use that, and those experiences in classrooms, to apply it to real life. Those are the main shifts. Middle school, we have come to the conclusion, is an extremely important aspect of high school and secondary mathematics. It is the foundation. And the reality of it is that the foundation for high school mathematics starts now in kindergarten. And they're not, and you're going to hear me say this again a little bit later, but everything we teach builds from lesson to lesson, in a grade level and across grade levels. There aren't isolated incidents of learning anymore in math classrooms. They all are telling a story that prepare kids and give them a really solid foundation kindergarten through eighth grade to have success in math in high school. That can't be cut or accelerated. And then finally, you know, we continue to grapple with, is there a way to create pathways for kids in secondary math where they still continue to have access to that AP Calculus, AP Statistics, or whatever higher levels of math? Is there a better way to do it than what we are currently doing? As well as, we have to take a close look at the materials we've adopted to make sure that there is. As we talked about at the beginning, two years ago, you tasked me, and I say "us," because it really has been an "us" process for the last two years, in really addressing the shifts and the expectations of our standards through an adoption process. And it has been an "us." It's been principals and teachers putting in countless hours, and the Ed Services team, and fiscal, and everybody putting in countless hours to make this happen. And one of the most important things that's come out of that is a true vision and a commitment to a true vision for math. And that is that it's a K-12 experience in our unified district. That isn't an elementary experience, and then in a middle school experience, and then a high school experience, but it's a K-12 cohesive experience. And we've committed to that, and you've seen that in the decisions we've made over the past couple of years. The other part of this that I mentioned earlier is this process has also allowed us to really step back and take inventory, both in relation to resources, instruction, as well as the structures we have in place. And identify, based off of some of the materials and our experiences and our deeper knowledge of the standards and the expectations of those standards, are there things we need to tweak? And that's what we're here to talk about today. We've also had the opportunity to work with Dr. Callahan, who's going to step up after me in a few minutes, and provide a broader perspective of some of the issues we've been grappling with, and hopefully bring some clarity to what math is like in the classroom. So I'm going to provide kind of the Newport Mesa perspective, and what's been going on here, and some of the decisions we think we've concluded to, and then he's going to provide some background to those decisions. So our commitment to meeting the expectations of the standards. One of the things that I think I've realized over the years in really digging into our K-8 standards is that they really are a coherent story. And as silly as it sounds for an English major to talk about a story from mathematics, it really is a beautiful thing if you look at it. And it builds, as I've said earlier, from kindergarten through eighth grade and setting a really solid foundation for kids, and for all kids, right, to have an opportunity to be really successful in math in high school and beyond. But like a good novel, right, if you pull out pages or chapters, you risk, you know, kind of ruining that story and not giving, you know, that story its complete picture. It's the same in how our standards have been arranged kindergarten through eighth grade. They build from grade level, they build within a grade level and from grade level to grade level, where if you're pulling out pages or portions of that content, you're messing with the foundation that kids need to have success in high school. Having said that as well, the focus, coherence, and rigor, back to those pieces. It's balanced, it's connected, and it actually takes kids, all kids, into a deeper understanding of math that they can then use in real life and apply. So across grade level, within grade level, that rigor is another piece that we need to make sure we're really clear on. It doesn't mean more, faster, and harder anymore, okay? It means a balance, a balance between the conceptual, procedural, as well as the application of math. It's a balance, okay? So gone are those days where in math classrooms, we put an algorithm on the board, show kids how to plug numbers in, and show them how to get the right answer, right? We're going for that deeper, meeting those expectations of focus, coherence, and rigor, and that deeper understanding of math that they can apply on their own, because they've made multiple connections throughout the years of how to use it. And then finally, you know, we really do believe, as I say over and over, that that K-8 content can't be skipped. None of it can be skipped, and none of it can be rushed. If we want all of our kids, both those that need additional help and those that are accelerated or that are high achievers, if we want them all to have that deep level of understanding and success in high school, we've got to make sure that solid foundation kindergarten through eighth grade, all of it is well in place. So, on to the decision that you approved for us last week, which is our 6-8 Materials illustrative math. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, they are the highest rated materials out there in relation to their alignment. The focus, coherence, and rigor is in them, and it's a beautiful story, sixth through eighth grade. The other piece that it's highest rated in is usability, okay? And what that means, not that it's easy to use, because I would be the first one to say that it's not, because there's an enormous amount of content knowledge that an instructor needs to have in order to really dig deep with kids. However, supports are in place in these materials for teachers to, they're given the strategies and ideas and ways to teach this material that will actually support all kids in their classroom and support the teachers teaching with these materials. So that usability doesn't just mean it's easy to use, but that there are supports for the teachers within these curriculum. And that's scored very high. These are, as you know, ed reports, which are a national, I guess, survey or group of teachers that spend over, probably between 150 to 200 hours at each grade level, digging into materials and analyzing their alignment and usability.
We refer to illustrative math because that's what we've approved. Is Open Up the title of the program, because it says "Open Up Resources," and that's the data, not illustrative?
Yeah, so this, it's an interesting, and I'm still kind of figuring this out. Illustrative math are the materials. It's a free, open source for people. Anybody can go on and use illustrative math materials, okay? Open Up Resources is the group, I'm not going to say publisher, because that's not the right term either, but they're the group who compile their materials and make them available as well.
So I sort of like--
So it's a relationship.
Sort of like the M and, what is it, the Minnesota National Consortium that used to have all these free, open source materials?
Correct.
For curriculum, got it.
Correct.
Get all that.
So, the other thing that we've had conversation about in relation to these illustrative math materials is that idea of acceleration. Can we really utilize these materials without skipping pieces of seventh and eighth grade math, to the extent and to the design as they are? And I think we've reached that conclusion of no. If our expectation in the standards is to go deeper, then we need to really consider that it would be very difficult and would mess the story of these materials up if we started trying to teach two years in one. I want to share with you just some current results in relation to this conversation. These are results for our current middle school pathway for acceleration. And our current pathway is, in seventh grade, students come in, they do a compressed or an accelerated year that teaches both seventh and eighth grade math.
That's called, that's enhanced math?
That's enhanced math in element, or in middle school. Their eighth grade year, they would be in Enhanced Math 1, ninth grade year, Enhanced Math 2, and 10th grade year, Enhanced Math 3 for calculus their senior year. These are just the numbers that you see here. So in 2014-15, this is our first cohort of this enhanced group. We had 275 students in that cohort, and by the time we're, this year, in 2017-18, we're actually down to 149 students, which is about a decrease of about 45% of the students no longer maintaining in that enhanced pathway. And I say 149, because you see in 2016-17 and 2017-18, 2016-17, 47 of those students are in Enhanced Math 1 in their ninth grade year, and they should actually be in Enhanced Math 2. So they're actually repeating Enhanced Math 1 from what they took in eighth grade. So about 42 to 43% of the kids who start in that pathway end up pulling themselves out of that pathway.
But all of them were in the Enhanced Math 8?
They were, they started in 2014-15 in the Enhanced 7-8 class, yeah.
And so what happened when they were in the eighth grade?
They went into Enhanced Math 1.
Enhanced Math, which was?
Which is the first year of high school.
First year of high school.
Well, yes, that's where it's normally taught, but in this case, it was taught in eighth grade.
Okay.
Right, so in seventh grade, they take the 7-8 Enhanced Accelerated class. In eighth grade, they take Enhanced Math 1.
So there is no Enhanced Math 8 in seventh, eighth grade?
Correct.
It's Enhanced Math 1.
Right. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that I'm correct.
It's Enhanced Math 1, it's Enhanced Math, it's called Enhanced Math 8, or is it actually called Math 1 in eighth, seventh, eighth grade? What's it?
Math 1.
In eighth grade?
Yes.
Okay, so there is no Enhanced Math 8?
Correct.
Oh, okay. That's good.
Right now, there's no Enhanced Math in eighth grade?
No, she did.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
So when we say Enhanced 7-8, that means they're taking the seventh and eighth grade curriculum and doing it basically in the seventh grade. So that's why there wouldn't be eighth grade curriculum that's enhanced for an eighth grade, or they already did it in the seventh grade. So then they bring down the high school curriculum, which is the Enhanced Math 1.
Back in the day, it would have been Algebra 1.
Okay, so a kid, so a kid goes from Enhanced Math 1 in--
Eighth grade.
Enhanced, no, they get Enhanced, they get Enhanced Seventh Grade Math. It's called Enhanced Math at the seventh grade, right? Enhanced Math. They're actually getting seventh and eighth. Then when they get, when you get the roll sheet, you know, their grades, it says Math 1--
Enhanced Math 1.
If they're in eighth grade, it's Math 1, or is it called Enhanced Math?
Enhanced Math 1.
It's called Enhanced Math 8.
No, no, it's called Math 1. We just want to make sure we're real clear, because there are a lot of rumors out there, so we just want to make sure that I'm, so it's Enhanced Math 1.
Correct.
And parents know that it's really ninth grade math?
Yes. It has the same course title.
Wait, wait, wait.
It's the same course title as in ninth grade?
As ninth grade. I teach Enhanced Math 1 at high school.
But they're getting it a year--
They're getting it in eighth grade. Okay, got it. Okay, I'm still not clear. Okay, seventh grade is--
Enhanced Math 7-8.
Oh, there you go. That's a new one. Enhanced Math 7-8.
Seventh grade, when they come from sixth grade to middle school, and they are on the Enhanced pathway, they start with Enhanced 7-8, where they learn both seventh and eighth grade curriculum.
Okay.
Then once they fulfill and progress in that class, they move to Enhanced Math 1 in eighth grade.
I see. Which they're, which is brought down from the high school level?
From the high school, or from, down from ninth grade, they learn it in eighth grade.
Ah, okay.
Then when they move to ninth grade, they go to Enhanced Math 2, which is supposedly a 10th grade level math, but it moves down to ninth grade.
And that's where you're losing?
Yes.
Yeah, we're losing them every year.
Okay.
Yeah, by the time they get into their sophomore year, which, this year, for example, we've lost about 45% of those kids who started in that track.
With the goal of an 11th and 12th, a student could be taking AP something, or taking calculus, or statistics, or the true old-fashioned labels of advanced math.
Correct, correct. The concern potentially being that we, you know, that we're cutting out some of that foundational, critical content from seventh and eighth grade when we accelerate and compress that class.
Which then hurts them later.
So I'm still, I'm still focusing on this chart. I'm trying to understand. Okay, so now I got, they all moved over to Enhanced Math 1. All of them moved over. Every single one of those kids--
No, we lost 40 of them. We went from 275--
Oh, I see, I can't see the numbers quite well.
--in 2014-15 to 236.
So now, the next one, the next one over, which is the two, starting the taupe colors, you got, I think it's 47, right?
47 is at the top who are repeating Math 1.
Math 1, and the bottom ones--
Enhanced Math 1, sorry.
The bottom ones are taking Enhanced Math 2.
Correct.
Okay.
176 of them.
Okay, so we've lost some. Okay, so the next one over, the last one is, a portion of them are repeating Enhanced Math 2.
40 of them are.
And the rest of them are where they're supposed to be.
Correct.
And the very, very first column, the dark color is kids that are in--
Yeah, so there are two different course codes, so when we pull, two different course codes for the same course, for the--
Isn't that special?
And so--
Glad we did that.
It pulls the data that way.
John, so for, from 2014-15, of those, of the 40 some we lost between that and 2015-16, did we lose them at the end of the year, or did some of them decide in the middle of the year, "I can't do this," and went back into regular math?
I don't know the answer to that. I can find out. Off the top of my head, I don't, I don't have that.
Jake saying yes, or that's one question.
Yeah, I can answer that, just living at the site, it's all the above. You know, some of them, it's, you know, at the conclusion of that year, you're recognizing that's not the fit, they need to repeat. Some of it, it's during the year, they're fish out of water, they need to go through, or if it's at the end, you realize, need to repeat. Yeah, it's all the above.
So what's the two, the light blue and the dark blue?
It's the same course, but there are two different course titles for it within our ARI system, but it's the same course. So when the data's pulled, it pulls it that way, both those courses.
But they, they're still the same, they're still Math 7-8.
Yeah, so it's, so you see up there at the top, the key. Enhanced Math 7-8 and Enhanced Math 8 are the same course, taught in seventh grade.
Isn't that special?
Okay.
Okay? It's just how it's, how it's set up in ARI from site to site.
Oh, man. We got through one chart. That one took 20 minutes.
Should we move on?
It's gonna be a long day. No, now it's good. We're having a lesson in mathematics.
So, one other piece of our own data is, if you recall back in January, February, you gave us approval to move forward with a district-wide performance class task to be completed by all six through 10th grade students. And that, that was to give us information in relation to where are our kids in relation to meeting our, meeting all of the expectations of our current math standards. And you'll see two different lines here. The blue line is, did they get the right answer? Can they compute, right? And the answer to that is pretty much, they're, they're doing a pretty good job. Up near 70%, when we get into 10th grade, they can compute. But the other expectations of being able to reason and communicate their reasoning is the orange line, which gets back to that deeper understanding and the ability to communicate their understanding of the mathematics and how to apply it in different ways. So you'll see--
Don't you think some of that is because the kids that are in sixth grade have been doing math like this for a few years, rather than--
That should be higher than--
That should be higher.
Yeah, it's a pretty flat line.
Yeah, well, no, but the other line, if, when you, they got the right answer, the sixth graders didn't get the right answer as much. And then as they moved up, they, the 10th graders got the right, I mean, the line goes up, right? Okay, the other one is more flat.
Correct.
That's, that's the same year, though. That's all the same year.
It's this year, those--
What I'm saying is, the sixth and seventh graders are more used to this type of teaching, you know, learning about, learning what it means to, a deeper understanding, learning what it means to get the answer, not just getting the answer. That's, that's what I meant. So, but these, these eighth graders, ninth and 10th, they really haven't had as much of that. Could that--
Well, I guess, you know, if I'm, if I'm interpreting that, our kindergarten through fifth grade students have had new materials before our sixth, seventh, or seventh and eighth grade. But our sixth grade students have had this, you know, they've had Swan up until this year, or throughout this year. So their experience, you know, has been about the same through sixth through 10th grade.
So technically, these ninth and 10th graders have had Swan math for at least five, I mean, when they were in elementary school, they had Swan math, at least in the sixth grade level, right?
Not every student, though. Not every school.
Yeah.
Oh, well--
Yeah.
So they're still not, they're, they're still not--
So we're still all over--
They still have a deep, they don't, they're lacking that deeper--
Yeah, I mean, I think what this shows us is that, you know, in general, if we're, if we're serious about college and career and the expectations of our standards meeting college and career readiness, we've, we've got some work to do in relation to that. And an important aspect of readying kids for that college and career piece is making sure they have that solid K-8 foundation in mathematics. So back to this question about, you know, are there pathways, as we look at pathways, you know, is this an opportunity for us to step back and look at our current pathways and, and potentially make some recommendations, or to make some recommendations for adjusting our pathways, but still giving kids all the opportunity for higher levels, access to higher levels of math? And also back to that, you know, sites being the unit of change. We've had conversations both with Dr. Callahan over the last 15 months, and when I say "we," I'm talking about lead teachers, sixth through 12th grade, and administrators around all of these topics and ideas, and this being the one that's most recent to us. And collaboratively, we've arrived at some decisions, or at least at some recommendations or some answers. And that relates to when to accelerate students, and doing this in a way where students can still get to those higher levels of math. And so knowing that kindergarten through eighth grade content is critical for kids to have success in high school, we took a close look at our acceleration patterns in middle school, and are recommending that we step back from those and give kids opportunities later in high school to make decisions, right, to have an opportunity or a choice to then accelerate at given times. So our, our steering committee and principals have spent several hours together talking this through, and we've arrived at this, that what we'd like to see, to make sure that all kids going into high school have that solid K-8 foundation, is that seventh, that seventh graders are offered seventh grade math and eighth graders are offered eighth grade math. And that if there's remediation needed, that doesn't mean we're going to create a remediation class, but all kids are going to be in those core seventh and eighth grade classes and will provide them an additional support class for mathematics. You'll also notice that in that number 2 for eighth grade, we want to make sure that we see some patterns through, right? We want to create some consistent experience for kids, so that, that A bullet under number 2, that for next year only, would we have our kids who were this year in Enhanced Math 7-8, go into Math 1 as eighth graders? And that would be just for next year, with backing that out the following year, and making sure that all kids had Math 7 and Math 8. And that ninth grade students going into an adoption year this, or into a pilot year this year, will all be in Math 1, and will be, will be taught using the pilot, beta pilot materials from illustrative math. And then this is where I'm going to call Jake Haley up to help me through some options. And I want to, before I show these next visuals, I want to make sure you're clear that I've committed to the steering committee that we would spend the next six to eight, eight months really ironing out our answer to the question of then what happens in high school. But we thought it would be important to show you options of, and some potential thinking without committing to these pathways, because we have lots of conversation to be had around the materials that we're looking at, as well as, you know, what's going to be best for our students. But I want to show you some ways that we can continue to provide kids that strong foundation by not skipping or accelerating in middle school, but giving them options to accelerate later on.
And they can still get as fast, they can still get as high as they could possibly get, we're just picking a different route.
Correct, that's correct. The other thing to kind of keep in mind here that's been part of our conversation, which is an important part, I think, is that social-emotional aspect of when kids are more ready developmentally and socially-emotionally to take more. And we've had lots of conversations about that as a district, and this also plays into the recommendation of-- the recommendation of, let's make sure our eleven and twelve-year-olds, right, are getting that social emotional support and are feeling that, that success in our math classes before we accelerate. And we want to make sure that those, that those pieces and resiliencies, resiliencies are in place before we do that.
So, is there, okay, so for these, these kids that are in, that are in the Enhanced Math 7, 8 this year, will get enhanced, they will get the math, they'll get the Math 1 for this year?
Correct.
Is there a cutoff? A-plus kid, hey, no problem, he's in there. What about the kid that's a C, or that is not being as successful, or is teacher recommendation that says, you know, you were in Enhanced Math 7, 8, but you would benefit from eighth grade? Or grades are not showing, it's, I mean, are we, are we taking a good, strong look at each of the kids and selecting, not based on parent input, but really based on, on teacher input and what they believe is the best, in the best interest of that student? Or are we just blanketing and saying, well, if you were in Enhanced Math 7, 8, we're going to give you Math 1? I, I just want to make sure that we're real clear on how that selection.
So I'm sure Jake can speak to this more eloquently, but I think our, our principals, counselors, and teachers do a great job of making sure kids and families have all the information they need in relation to placement. So I would, I would venture to say, but Jake can speak to this more, that, yeah, those conversations, if a kid's, you know, going to benefit from a straight Math 8 class, those conversations would be had.
Okay, and so that just question, and that's another question for another day, but are we going to make ourselves available sometime before the beginning of year, in September, to have those conversations with those particular parents who have concerns? So I just want to make sure that we get that on the table, that there may be some parents that are going to be calling and saying, whoa, I need to have a conversation about why you're doing this and what you're doing. Individual conversations specifically relative to one student. So I just want to make sure that you guys are available and open, the doors are there.
You're blocking out some time.
You're blocking out time to have conversations with them.
Could you go back to the previous? So, let me see. Who completed Enhanced Math 7? Okay, see, but I, I think it's nice if you use the same terms every time, because it gets confusing. So it's, if for eighteen and nineteen only, Math 1, is that Enhanced Math 1 or just Math 1?
That would be the Enhanced, yes.
Who completed Enhanced Math 7, 8? Yeah?
Correct, this year.
Well, there's only, I only see in math, Enhanced Math 7, 8, right?
They changed, that's the one with the two different names.
Did you change it?
No, if it's got two titles, there's Math 7 and Math 7.
Correct. So they would go into Math 1, because our, all ninth graders are taking Math 1 this next year.
The new Math 1 or our old Math 1?
New Math 1.
Thank you.
That's why, we, we won't be having.
Thank you for clarifying that, thank you.
We won't be having Enhanced Math 1 either. We're getting rid of that, and every kid is going to have.
Math.
Math 1.
Correct.
In ninth grade. Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Good for you, good catch.
Sorry, I.
Thank you for that, I can clear that.
Just because I'm trying to understand, yeah, okay.
Oh, man.
Okay. Our answer.
So, options for kids to make some decisions in their high school, I'm going to turn it over to Jake here to help us through this one.
So first to answer the question, that, being, at the luxury of being at a seven, twelve campus and looking at conversations as people accelerate into the eighth grade year, absolutely, we look and recommend best placement, based off of what we're seeing from teachers and conversations. We do reach out to families, we're great at communicating, letting them know, here's our recommendation for next year's math placement that we feel is appropriate for students. But as John alluded to, next year only, there will be the option for those students who are continuing in our old sequence to be in that Math 1 as eighth graders. So hopefully, this looks a lot simpler than where we are, as far as explaining pathways. And you can see, and you'll hear, especially from Dr. Callahan, as well as from our teachers and principals, kind of the why, as we've really begun to understand the shifts in mathematics and making sure that we have that solid foundation in that K8 year. So the Math 7, Math 8 speak for themselves, real, real simple, all students will be going through this pathway. Then in the ninth grade year, they will all take Math 1. Tenth grade year will be Math 2, and then that really kind of becomes the junction point of when you start to make that jump. So really, that sophomore year, as you're heading into that junior year, which we know is arguably one of the most critical years in a student's academic progress, they're either going to just regular Math 3, or they're going to take our Math 3, that also has precalculus built into it, which again, is a little bit more accelerated, but still goes through the concepts, to just make sure it embeds that precal, so students are ready to make that jump to calculus in that senior year. So we still get to that finish of AP Calculus, similar to what we do now, in that kind of enhanced pathway that we discussed here earlier. Again, the shifting point just now happens in that tenth grade year, when we believe students will be more mathematically mature and have that solid foundation to kind of make that choice. A second way to look at it is a, a little more advanced route, which would be the junction point happening in that tenth grade year, because of our schedules, and I'll talk through a little bit how this could look. It really lends itself, at this point, to be kind of that, hey, you know, I really identify myself as a STEM student, I've been successful in math, I had, again, solid foundation in that middle school years, I did well in my Math 1, and feel that, you know, with my engineering, my physics, and other sciences, this is what I want, and working with counselors, this is what we would do. Currently, in our, in our block schedule, if you just look at a year-long math course, because of every other day, I'll simplify it a little bit, students receive ninety days in a hundred and eighty, because it's every other day. What you would do is, the Math 2 would happen in a semester, which is ninety days. You would still get ninety days of math instruction. Then your second semester, you would take Math 3, you still get ninety days of instruction, similar to what you do now. And then your junior year, you've got options galore. You can go into precalculus if you feel that's the best fit for you, get a little better solid foundation before you go to AP Calc. You could go directly to AP Statistics, or we would imagine a lot of students would go into our AP Calc as juniors, and then decide their senior year, what math they would then ascend into. So again, the shifts are now starting to happen in, in high school, instead of really kind of forcing that when they're eleven and twelve, really making sure we're building that solid foundation to get more success. And Dr. Callahan will give lots of kind of examples of how the math has shifted and kind of the why.
Can we just get rid of the word "enhanced"? Just can't call Math 3 with calculus, precal, so that we don't, you know, so that we don't reintroduce again.
Sure, obviously using current terms, we absolutely can get rid of it.
I mean, I just, because we keep, we keep saying those things, and we are eliminating them at some, and then all of a sudden, we reintroduce it. So it'd just be easier just to say it, it's with precalculus, so that it's just easier.
Although parents like enhanced.
Of course they. But does it mean anything?
It's nice to get rid of it.
Does it mean anything?
Because it, it might not have meaning.
Exactly.
So is it the same, the first, the recommended course, the first recommended course sequence, you can take Math 3 or Math 3 with precal calculus, right?
The eleventh grade year, correct.
Yeah, but then, in the accelerated tenth grade, Math 2 and Math 3, the first one's a quarter long, a quarter?
Semester.
A semester. Oh, so they're, your first semester's Math 2, your second semester's Math 3.
Actually, they can take, they take them both at the same time, right?
No.
No, the, the way our current courses exist in our, in our current curriculum, again, we're going to be looking at all this in the next six to eight months, but just using our current terminology, you would need Math 2 before you would be ready for Math 3. So you would take Math 2's first semester, and then you'd take Math 3 second semester. You would be getting ninety days, because you would take it every day, instead of every other day.
Oh, so you'd be readjusting the schedule, so that they would be taking it.
If they're being enhanced, they're taking more math.
Okay.
It's on Enhanced.
So.
Exactly.
Second semester.
It's just Math 3, second semester.
And Math 3, but Math 3 is a year-long course. Math 3 with precalculus is technically a year-long course, so that too would be compressed in a.
Well, they would have ninety days, right? They would take it every day.
So basically, so they would take it, period one and two.
Correct.
So they would be getting four hours of math?
Two hours a day. Right, because they, on the block schedule, it's odd and even.
Yeah, got it, okay.
But if you were none, if you're in a normal, everyday, average kid that doesn't want to.
Yes, so currently, our students have math every other day. You, you receive instruction, usually you go to get some assistance or help, or you're doing your homework, and then you have it that following day. This first road, the kind of the recommended road, is still meeting that, you know, every other day, ninety days total of math instruction. The, the second really is kind of a doubling up, if you will.
But, but go back to the first one.
Yeah, how do I go back?
Math 3? Math 3 with precalculus.
So again, these would be things we'll be looking at, and those are great questions of getting rid of the word "enhanced." So our current Math 3 materials, in looking at them, they aren't robust enough, for the most part. Some students who achieve at a really high level probably have enough precalculus skills to make that jump to AP Calc, but they don't have enough precalculus built into the Math 3. Right, it's just kind of more just still algebraic and trigonometric sense, and you're gaining that understanding, but it lacks a little bit in precalculus. So what we have created in the Newport Mesa Unified School District is that Math 3 Enhanced, which goes through all the Math 3 materials, and also embeds in some precal skills, so you're ready for calculus.
Math 3 with precalculus.
Yes.
I like that better. Okay, there are, they are two separate classes.
Correct.
With, with potentially different outcomes at different times. So I can, thank you, you cleared it up for me.
I think clarity is important, and, you know, nothing better to have an English teacher leading this, because they can work on the clarity of these titles, once we determine which, which pathway we're, we're adopting.
Yes, but I was looking at the really, I was looking at the math part.
I know, I know.
But I get it now, because if you have Math 3 with precalculus, you are much more prepared to go into AP Calculus.
That's what he's saying.
Right, but I didn't, it took me a while to get myself there.
Okay, and so I want to be real clear, too. So if a kid is accelerating, he's giving up an elective for math, right? So basically, if he wants to accelerate, he, he will not, because we have the block schedule, he will not have three elect, he'll have, this will become.
An elective.
An elective, but it's actually the same class, right? So he gives up an elective in this, in his schedule.
In this, yes.
Okay, perfect, all right.
So as I mentioned earlier, I'm going to ask Dr. Callahan to come on up and provide kind of a broader perspective of, you know, his perspective of our work, as well as some, some larger context of, of this conversation.
Thank you, John. So I'm Patrick Callahan, and I've had the honor of working the past eighteen months. I apologize, my, kind of losing my voice a little. I've been talking about math a lot.
I wonder why.
But I'll, I'll do my best to kind of power through. But again, I just want to say briefly, it's been a real pleasure working with this group. Common Core was adopted eight years ago in two thousand and ten, and I've had the opportunity of working with many districts. Some people might not be aware, but many international schools across the world have also adopted the Common Core. I've worked with schools in Singapore, Shanghai, that are doing the Common Core. And all of these questions that this group is asking are ones that people have been putting a lot of thought in. And I think in particular, I want to credit this group for not rushing the decision, and really going into depth, and really coming into this with eyes open and considering all options. My, my role today is to try to spend about thirty minutes putting this into a broader context. These decisions don't happen in isolation, and I think it's really important to know the, the context, especially in terms of colleges and careers and expectations, where, which inform these decisions. So with that, these are the four points that we're going to talk about. I'll talk about briefly the bigger shifts, then the Common Core standards itself, and give you examples. Yes, we'll look at some math examples, so that'll be interesting, and then get to this point about middle school being different than it was previously, and the implications in terms of the curriculum and pathways. So the main thing here, the first point, the big one, is the shifts in expectations. The colleges and careers are really looking for different things. I mean, times are changing, and there's different skill sets. I'm going to share two slides with you. This one is a little outdated, but this is the, they interviewed the Fortune 500, the largest 500 companies in the world, and asked them, what are the most valuable skills that you want from people? And in nineteen seventy, there's the list of the top ten skills, ranked ordered. And then they asked them again in, about thirty years later, a generation later, in nineteen ninety-nine. And so obviously, looking at that, things changed over that period of time, and those of you, and I'm not going to ask for a show of hands that were around in nineteen seventy, you know, there, it was essential. You needed computational skills. You didn't have access to spreadsheets and computers, and if you wanted to run a business or keep track of your personal finances, you needed to. And that was the number two. By, by the turn of the century, by nineteen ninety-nine, computational skills had just dropped off the top ten. I mean, most people had access readily to this. Notice instead, problem solving, teamwork, and communicating jumped to the ones that they wanted. And again, this is from the Fortune 500 companies. More up to date, in two thousand and fifteen, the World Economic Forum did a similar exercise. So in two thousand and fifteen, they had business and economists from all over the world, and they asked them to rank the skills. And in two thousand and fifteen, you see again, complex problem solving, coordinating, critical thinking, those are really what they see as the most valuable. They also asked them, and this was in two thousand and fifteen, five years down the road, what would you predict? And notice, we're almost at twenty twenty, it's hard to believe, but that's just a couple years away. The list is pretty similar, I would say, what's sort of interesting is that sort of creativity jumps up there, and sort of flexibility. In other words, you know, change is happening quickly, and we need students that can think critically, be flexible. The Hewlett Foundation funds a lot of work, and they, for years, have had something called deep air learning as the sort of framework for all of their foundation work. And again, they have six competencies, and notice, you keep seeing the same things emerge over and over again. Think critically, solve complex problems, work collaboratively, communicate, and then also these sort of meta processes of being able to learn how to learn. In other words, acknowledging upfront that we don't know exactly what a kid in kindergarten or, in kindergarten right now is going to need by the time they get to college. We can't make that prediction, so the best we can do is prepare them to be able to handle that flexibly. So those are the big shifts in the, sort of the global workforce, as you will. The Common Core standards were adopted in two thousand and ten, and they were a response. And I, I wanted to spend just two minutes talking about this, because even though this is eight years old, I think sometimes there's confusion around the story of these creation. And essentially, it was businesses were the primary factor. Businesses and colleges were saying, we would like to tell the K-12 system what we expect from high school graduates. I mean, if you want to think of it, you're producing graduates, and they're the consumers of these high school graduates, businesses and colleges. And so they, they did it in two steps. And the first step was, they surveyed many fields. And again, despite being a mathematician myself, if you were to ask someone what type of mathematics or how much mathematics a student should know, you probably don't want to ask a mathematician only, because obviously, they have a certain bar and set of standards. They went through the process of asking many different businesses and many different careers, not just STEM ones. They asked people journalism, history, English, what should you be able to know and do mathematically? So they spent a year, tens of thousands of responses, and they synthesized these into what they called the Standards for Career and College Readiness. They created a definition broadly synthesized from a query of a simple question, what should a high school graduate know and be able to do mathematically? That was the first step. The second one is, once they had that sort of agreement, broad agreement, then they reverse engineered. If this is a high school graduate, what they can do and know mathematically, so that's a twelfth grader, what did they need in eleventh, tenth? Walked it all the way back to kindergarten. And again, what's sort of important is that they worked hand in hand, not just theoretically, but with developmental psychologists and people who knew early childhood education. Again, mathematicians could just say, hey, wouldn't it be great if elementary kids knew calculus? But it's not realistically developmentally. And so the standards were designed in this way, and I think that, again, it connects And so the standards were designed in this way, and I think that, again, it connects to the broader pressures and forces about what we actually want kids to be able to do. Finally, this has come up a lot in John's talk, is that the Common Core defines rigor as a balance. Focus, coherence, rigor was the sort of the goals of it. Rigor is this balance in terms of conceptual understanding, procedural skills, and fluency with equal intensity. And this line here, not making math harder or introducing topics earlier or at earlier grades. You can always introduce topics earlier or just give much harder problems, but the Common Core is saying, that's not what they mean by rigor. That might be difficult or challenging, but it's not addressing it. And I'll give examples. But again, I want to highlight, I've talked about the fact that computational skills is not really what companies are looking for these days as a real deal breaker, or colleges, but it's not, I'm not saying just hand kids a calculator and stop teaching it. It's a balance, equal balance, equal intensity. Kids should be able to add, subtract. They should know what percentages mean and fractions. But if that's all they know, and they don't know, they don't understand when they would use that or how to apply it, that's really what's being addressed. We have a lot of students even entering the elite universities with fives in AP Calculus that still don't quite understand why they would do an integral or take a derivative or what it's, what it means. And so I think that idea of not just having these sort of procedural skills, but really broadly being able to make sense of that and being able to apply it, is what is meant by rigor, not just more advanced topics quicker or earlier. In terms of concreteness, some of you may be aware, some of you may not, the SAT, which is the instrument used by the most students in terms of applying to colleges. The SAT itself went, underwent a change in 2016. And these are cut from the SAT's website. It's about the real world. Again, I'll just read a little bit. Instead of testing you on every math topic there is, the new SAT asks you to use the math that you'll rely on most in all sorts of situations. Question on math tests are designed to mirror problem solving and modeling you do in college, jobs, and personal life. Again, so the shift is less on, do you know all of these different topics, but can you actually use it to solve authentic problems? This also goes on to say, what was the, what does this test actually measure? This should look familiar. I'll just remind you, if this looks familiar. Fluency, conceptual understanding, and applications. So the SAT will be the first to say they are not testing the Common Core. That's, the SAT has been around a lot longer than the Common Core. But they actually evolved based on common pressures about what jobs, careers, and colleges are looking for. So in some sense, the new SAT and the Common Core are more like cousins, rather than one being an offshoot of the other. So it might be a while since you've took an SAT, but I just want to highlight, you know, this is, these are all released items on the website, and I just want to highlight a few things. You know, this one typical image taken of the surface of Mars by a camera, eleven point two gigabits, gigabits in size, and it goes on, and they tell you how many hours a day, what's the maximum number of images. I'm not even reading the whole thing, and I'm not going to put people on the spot by asking you to solve this right now. But I want to highlight a few features. One, it's wordy. Part of the work is that you have to make sense of what's going on, and figure it out, and then decide what to do with it. Also notice, again, this is calculator permitted. Many of the questions don't mind if you use calculators, you don't always need them. Again, acknowledging technology. Here's another one, again, conceptualized. This is about the daily calcium intake. And what's interesting, they're asking you to sort of set up an equation or solve this.
The answer is the problem.
So even though it's multiple choice, don't get me wrong, the type of math that kids are expected to do is a little bit different. Here's another one, there's a lot more questions about data. I mean, since I was in school, you know, data, the information age, we're inundated with data. And so all informed citizens and students should be able to look at data and make sense of it. This is about essentially some data from doing surveys of manatees and ask you to interpret. What is this graph telling you about the, you know, they're asking you the yearly increase, average yearly increase in the number of manatees. So again, it's not just plugging and chugging, it's looking at a situation, making sense, what is this telling you, and then how do you extract that information from it? I'll tell you, for those who remember, before the Common Core, we had the STAR test or the high school exit. And I just want to say, these are sample questions of what students used to do. Which one is the solution to the equation? This one, the second one there, doesn't even have any words. It just says, go for it. I mean, presumably, it's asking you to simplify those expressions. So the old expectations were more emphasis on procedural, routine, and decontextualized items. That first question is not, if you've never seen the quadratic formula, you're not going to figure it out now while you're taking this test. This is not a point about sense-making. The expectation is that you have seen this exact type of question, you've memorized a solution to it, and you've practiced it. And so when you hit it on the test, you either do it or you don't. And so that's what I mean by routine. Decontextualized, you know, there's no context. Less focus on sense-making, complex problem solving in the concept itself. So this is a real shift, and it has consequences I'll get to. I know this has a ton of text, but I had no other way of, I wanted to just do one last compare and contrast. Because the other thing is, is that sometimes when we look at these course pathway decisions, we get sucked into a debate about when is a topic occurring? In other words, is this topic a ninth grade topic or an eighth grade topic? Or is some seventh graders able to do this topic? And I think the focus on where topics are, the sort of syllabus-type questions, misses an important point. This is the same topic, systems of linear equations, for those who are interested. And in the little blue box is the old STAR test question, which basically says, what is the solution to this system of linear equations? In other words, here's the system of equations, solve it. Again, you would have been expected to memorize a way of doing that. The new SAT also has an item about systems of linear equations. And this one is different, and I'll just sort of highlight. It's saying the toll rates for a bridge, six fifty for cars, ten dollars for trucks. Over a period of time, you had one hundred and eighty-seven cars and trucks, the total collected was one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Solving this system will lead to number of X cars and Y truck. They want you to set up the equation. Notice, it's not even asking for the solution. It never asks you how many cars and trucks there are, because nobody really cares how many cars and trucks there are. But what they care about is, can you read a situation, make sense of it, and set it up? And so I think just looking at those two side by side really give a concrete highlight of what we're expecting. And again, the one in the box is from an eighth grade STAR test. So that's what they used to expect. So moving on to my third point is that there's been a lot of talk and potential concern or questions about this idea of what's happening in middle school. And I want to say that, you know, it's not just about the topics, but it's really, there are some very, very important. I will go on record saying, the most important mathematics, K-12, for the vast majority of students, is middle school mathematics. Proportional reasoning, decimals, percentages, functions, data, everyday geometry. Everyone in their life will encounter this at some point. I hate to say this, but there are people that probably are not going to be using the Pythagorean theorem in their everyday life.
Aw gee.
I know.
I know.
It hurts me to even say it out loud. But this is all put in here because it is important, and I don't want to lose track of that. Not just important to pass a test, or not just important to do well on the SAT, but important for life and career.
Are you including sixth grade in this?
Yes.
Six, seven, eight?
I, yeah. My, thank you for that. I realize that middle school here is
Seven and eight, but we, but our math starts in six, so it's still six, it's still a six, eight continuum.
Yes. Thanks for the clarification. Structurally, I tend to think of sort of the mathematics standards organize themselves in a sort of six, eight as middle school. This is just a little comic relief in the middle. These are great, when we talk about basic area and other problems. I really want to go to that hundred and thirty percent off clearance sale. I'm going to buy as many as they have.
They're sold out.
I mean, I, this was a real example that my mother was dealing with, is that the carpet was by the square foot and by the square yard, and she was asking me, wait, which is, this is a better deal? It's not immediately obvious. You need some middle school geometry, and you need to know it well. So why accelerate in high school instead of mathematics? I mean, sorry, mathematics, in middle, middle school? So I want to just highlight, why did we start accelerating in middle school anyways? We've been doing that for a while, but not forever. And one of the things is, is that there, I think, although there's probably other factors, I think the primary factor was that honestly, there was some, when middle school was primarily procedural, there's some kids that just got it quickly. And if you have a, you know, fifty work, a problem worksheet, and you're done, then you're probably bored, and waiting for the other students to finish. And so a solution to what do we do with these kids that are not being challenged in middle school? The solution that California came up with is, well, let's pull the high school courses down and let, you know, let them do that, which is exactly what you have in your district as the sort of previous sort of situation. And I won't revisit, because I think we talked about those pathways, the enhanced seven, eight, math one, and all of that. But that was, in a nutshell, essentially various flavors of bringing high school courses into middle school to make that happen. So there's actually another solution to the same problem. So if middle school mathematics is not challenging for some students, so they skip ahead to high school math, that's what we're doing now, or you could actually change the mathematics that's taught in middle school, and make it more rigorous and demanding. Again, the idea, this is what the Common Core did. So instead of saying, yeah, middle school is not really working for all kids, let's have them skip into high school. Or you could make middle school more rigorous. And I think that that's an important takeaway. Just to give you an idea, this is actually a map of the mathematics in Common Core grade eight. And it's very rigorous. In fact, there actually are a lot of high school teach topics, solid geometry, geometry, volumes of a sphere, a cone. You can read, I won't go through all these systems of equations, Pythagorean theorems up there, geometry, exponent, scientific notation. So again, this is a very full, rich course. The suggestion that we used to have kids take grade seven and eight together, basically by going twice as fast, is a less viable option when you've actually put a lot more into that course. So again, the previous pathway was a solution to a particular problem. But it wasn't the only solution, and the Common Core essentially proposed a different one. And, you know, to be honest, I don't think there's been good communication to the communities, parents. And so parents naturally say, we used to accelerate in seventh grade, so we got new materials, why can't we keep accelerating? And I think that's because there's a lot more, it's not just going through topics quickly, but it's a fundamental shift in expectations of what students are expected to do. But lastly, I really want to highlight this last point, because I think at the end of the day, sometimes people, you know, really aren't too concerned with the play-by-play topic of what's happening where. It's more about end goals. And this is where they look to a school system as a professional educators and say, I want to make sure my kids, you know, are being given every opportunity to be successful. And in particular, I want to make sure that my students are having access, if they want them, to the higher level options. This point has been raised repeatedly, but I want to stress that many parents have grown up, maybe they have older kids, where there was Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, Pre-calculus, Calculus. And if you wanted access to calculus, then you had to solve the problem of what do you do with five years of math and four years of high school?
Algebra in eighth grade.
And so one solution of that was push it down and, you know, compress middle school, and then, then you can fit them in. Again, coupled with the fact that the middle school was predominantly sort of procedural in nature, you saw the test items I showed you, that type of thing, that solution worked for many students. So again, here's a way I think of sort of thinking about this. Previously, anytime you have a problem, cars and bridges and tolls, you have to read it, manatees and data, you have to sort of set up, what's going on in this situation? Once you've set it up, then you can do the computations. Then you, of course, what do you do with those computations? You interpret it, and then finally, you have to be able to communicate. So these are the four stages of sort of, what does it mean to actually do mathematics in life, in a job, in college? We really did focus on that second step. The new expectations are, that's not sufficient anymore, especially with the advances in technology. Computers, my smartphone can do computations pretty well, better than I can, honestly. But it's not very good at setting up, it's, you know, it's not very good at making sense. And then, you know, what we really worry about is, we want kids to have that number sense. Once they've calculated someone, is that reasonable? And what does it mean? And so the, and then lastly, you saw over and over again, all of the job reports wanted some form of communication. There's not a job on earth where you have, you're not going to be presented with a situation where your boss or someone, a colleague, is going to say, well, I got something different than you. Explain to me, convince me. And that's the communication part. All of these are essential. So it's less about what topics are covered and how quickly, and more about what students are expected to do with those topics. That's, I hope, the sort of punchline that we walk away with. Also, I want to say, although you saw pathways for students to be able to accelerate later in high school, or I want to really highlight that that second case wasn't about acceleration, it was really about doubling down. This is about a kid giving up an elective because they love math.
Right.
I would have been that kid. But it's not also telling me I have to go twice as fast, because speed isn't really the salient feature. In high school, they're at an age where they can make choices about they want to do more of something. This point here, though, is that the Common Core that gets lost is, even if you don't accelerate at all, if you're very successful, if you're that A-plus student or A student in math one, two, three, in ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, you're well-prepared to be successful in AP Calculus. And you saw that on the pathways. Not all students need that extra year of pre-calculus, if they've actually done the Common Core. Statistics is also a very viable option, and that's the other thing that the Common Core has introduced, starting in middle school, is a lot of data and statistics. It wasn't there when I was a student, but it's definitely important for kids to be successful now. So even with the acceleration options available, the message here is, it's not just about rushing through topics to get to these advanced classes. We really want to make a system that kids, as many kids as possible, can really have options to be successful. And so hopefully, this gives a little bit more clarity in terms of that bigger picture. And so the upshot is, is that there's shifts in expectations from careers in college, shifts in standards and assessments. These lead to new curriculum and instruction, and new policies and pathways to better serve all students regardless of their goals. I realized, and this is in honor of John, this almost looks like a poem that I wrote there at the end, for my nod to the English teacher. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was fabulous. That was great.
So at this point, I thought we would open it up for, you know, discussion with our esteemed panel, and answer any questions, and have a conversation.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Mrs. Yelsey?
Yeah, and I thank you for all this information. John, I've talked to you before, and I appreciate all the work you've done, all the teachers, all the principals, TOSs. I know you put a lot of work into this, and I'm not an educator by profession, so I rely on you to get the best information. And we've changed, you know, over the years since my kids were in school, a long time ago, but we've changed math along the way many times. Some have been for the good, some have not been for the good. So I still, even though we say this is the way we should be going, it still makes me a little bit nervous sometimes. And I think, even though I appreciate what we're talking about, because it took me a while to really get it, I've talked to many of you and some people who are not in the room. I appreciate that, and I understand for seventh and eighth grade, they should get all the conceptual material and be able to really understand it and not have a rigorous course. But there are still, we also, as school board members, at least, I feel this way, because I've heard from a lot of people. I've heard from a lot of people. We have another constituency that, I mean, we want to do what's best for kids, but we do have the community and the parents out there who also want what they think is best for their kids. And I feel personally, I have to listen to them. And I've been getting a lot of feedback of, you know, how can we not have enhanced math? My kid, you know, there are some kids. And I've, I've talked to enough elementary school people to know, I would say, for instance, in my zone alone, there's probably four to five, at least, kids in every one of the schools who is really at an advanced level while they're in elementary school. I mean, they, you know, they've, they've just gotten it from an earlier, a very early age. So, to me, that's why I have all along felt, we still need some kind of enhanced or honors, something for them. And so, when I listen to you and we talk about, we want them to get the whole curriculum, and I know within this illustrative math now, there's a lot of chapters or whatever you call them, lessons, that they can't even get to all of them, correct? I mean, they may not be able to. And so, if, is it possible to then have a class of, and I know we've also tested the sixth grade, even though, what are we testing them for? Because we're not having any, we're putting everybody in the same thing. But if we had a group where they're doing the same math, they're not skipping anything, but they're working a little faster within their class to get more. And, you know, you call it an honors class, or you call it something else. I mean, I, I still don't get why we can't do that.
Okay. Mrs. Matoya, go ahead. We, this is kind of a free-flowing thing.
Oh, good.
As long as you don't, like, interrupt people.
Get rude.
Yeah, don't get rude.
Okay. I think, what I'm hearing is that it's an awful burden, I'm going to look this way, but need to look over there, too. It's a big burden on the teachers to make sure, if you're having a class of children that is not differentiated in their mathematics, love of or capability of so far, that's a big responsibility to make sure you're going to challenge that child. That would have been me finishing the 50 problems and saying, now what? But then I really didn't want to be challenged, I just wanted 25 more problems to do because that hurt my brain to challenge me. So you, but you're going to challenge those kids at the same time, helping those ones that are struggling with the language or the finding where the math problem is in that question. And that's a big responsibility on the teachers. And we have seen in the past, what we've done is to do grouping like we do in elementary school and early ages, this is where you're struggling, so we'll group you over here and work on that, and you're going to have it all together. That's where I think, are those enhance, are those math lovers students going to be able to be exposed to that rigor so they're not bored?
And they're not going to miss class, and then they'll be truant, and then they'll be sarbed, and I mean, you know, goes down the line. Because they're bored, they don't come, I don't need to go to class.
So, I think, before I turn over to-
There was a lot of questions.
I think Stephanie's wants to speak, but a couple of things that I just want to refer back to that we said a little bit earlier. The materials we adopted six, eight, illustrative math, we talked about that usability component. They support that within the, the materials. They support that differentiation. That's not to say, however, that, that, and one of the things that teachers in our steering committee talked about is the need and the want for support and training around differentiation. So, I don't want to pretend like we don't have a lot of work to do to support that. But the ask has been there, and that's all I need to make sure that we support it. And that doesn't, just another piece, and then I'll turn it over to Stephanie, who's actually experienced it, but that doesn't mean we pull teachers out, 60 teachers out and put them in a room and say, here's what differentiation looks like, go do it. It's going to need to be embedded in their work and supported through the work that they're doing, so that they're actually doing the work and then seeing it in action and learning from that. So, I guess the two points are, we are committed to support that and the materials do in and of themselves as well.
And I can talk a little bit about how the materials support that. As I've told you before, they, for their lower-level students coming in, or the students that are farther behind, I should say, the materials start with these, what we call low-floor problems. And so, students have access to them, everyone in the class can engage in discussion, and then it builds from there. And like you said, with the 50 problems and you finish it on a page, well, there's never 50 problems in this new curriculum at one time. However, there's a section called, are you ready for more? And so, every day, at the end of one of the activities, if a student does finish early while other students are still working, there's an are you ready for more problem that takes the material they've just learned and goes about five steps deeper into the content. It's not taking them to the next grade level, it's just going deeper. And it's a very, it takes something maybe concrete and makes it more abstract and has kids explain how they work. And they're problems that I myself have spent on some of them, like 10, 15 minutes, just trying to figure it out as a math teacher. And so, they really challenge the students. And during our pilot process, I got to pilot with a group of the Enhanced Seven-Eight students, I piloted the eighth-grade curriculum. And some, even in that class, there's a differentiated group of students, and students would finish early and they, and it was like their goal every day to try to figure out that really challenging problem. And they, they loved that experience of taking that material and being able to go deeper. And when they got it, it was this extra satisfaction of like, wow, I got the are you ready for more today? So, I think that the materials do lend themselves naturally into letting the students self-select on, I finished early, I want to try this challenging problem that makes this content go deeper. That, that's really beneficial for our high-level student.
So, one of the questions that we get, because I think that's, we've all grown up with the old way, right? Drill and kill, you know? I know that A-plus, whatever. The question is, is how are we communicating the Common Core's skills and the standards needed today to our parents? So, on the report card, it doesn't, it says computational, you know, it doesn't talk about all of the rigor, all of, you know, it talks about the procedural skills, but we really don't identify, and how are we communicating that to the parents? That you're, you know, A, that your child is trying the, and is, and is being successful on the, on, what'd you call it?
Are you ready for?
Are you ready for, you know, that your child has, has successfully, has, has challenged himself or herself to take those most of the time and has done very well. Versus, how are we communicating to the parents that, yes, they're getting it because that's what we're getting? How are we going to do this? You're not telling us, you know? We used to be able to know, my kid was really clear. It's on the report card, enhanced math. Now it's math seven. How are we going to tell the parents that they are getting what they need, what the teachers, I mean, how are we going to let them know? And if we only are communicating by a report card, that's not telling them a lot.
Go ahead.
Okay. The way I communicate with parents, through School Loop. And School Loop has the assignments, and in each assignment by each student, it's basically telling them that today's assignment is covering, you know, Pythagorean theorem. And that you go in by each student and their progress, and you write the comment, okay, your student has progressed today in Pythagorean theorem, so they got these five points and they are doing well, they are moving to the next topic. Or they didn't progress well and we need, you know, further. Another thing about the curriculum is, it has the cooldown for all the students at the end of class, last five minutes. The cooldown tells me as a teacher that, okay, wait a second, the students did not get this lesson today, you need to revisit it next time. Or, no, go ahead, they got that lesson, go ahead and to the next one. So, the differentiation is in there. The, the curriculum itself is helping this, the teacher differentiate through the cooldown and through the warm-up. So, through the warm-up discussion, it's telling me, yes, students are ready to move on, or wait a second, they have a misconception from last time, we need to revisit this or clear it a little bit more. So, how we are communicating to parents is through School Loop, at the beginning of the year, through parent night or through back-to-school night, trying to explain to them what they can expect throughout the year with their students. And of course, emails and communications in case it's really severely misunderstood to one of the students.
So, Ms. Amir, do you, in all confidence, feel that all teachers do what you're doing?
At least.
I think that, I think that's a problem.
That is, that is the number one.
I cannot speak for all the teachers.
I think we have the best of the best here, by the way. I mean, I applaud you all. I think you're-
Thank you.
Great teachers. But I think that's a big problem.
See, I guess, I think that's where, that's where my concern is, is that I'm not confident, A, that every single parent goes on every single day and checks their-
Or every single teacher puts it on.
Or every single teacher puts on their expectations and then makes a notation of where their child is every single day. And I'm not just picking on math, but that happens to be what we're talking about now. I just am not confident at that, at that level. And I'm not confident that, that even at, that one time, back-to-school night or at a math night, which some schools don't have, some schools do, is, is, is the level of communication given the complete shift in understanding of, that we're not interested in teaching your kids just how to do a problem. We're interested in the deeper level, the deeper level, you know, the understanding of the conception, being able to communicate, all of the, all of the things that the standards are. I'm not sure that we have communicated that to our parents and that a one-shot deal or on a School Loop is going to meet it. That's my, that's my level of concern.
So, let me see if I can kind of summarize and understand. And by the way, this is, this is the important part about consensus building, is to have differing points about sharing a dissent, a dissenting perspective. So, what I'm hearing is, what worked well with the old labels was that people assumed that they were getting something different. Okay? Whether that was true or not is, can be debated. So, if we're moving to this more holistic approach, then, and we know from years and years of research, that the most motivating factor for students and for families is feedback. Okay? Immediate feedback is what students really get motivated by. They, they, in fact, many of us can remember getting that paper that we worked on and we didn't get it returned to us for three weeks, it was kind of, whoa, whoa, you know, why, why, what, what, how do I improve on this? You know, it's, it's just too little, too late. So, what we're asking, what you're asking here is, what is the mechanism we're going to put in place, the system, to make sure that this feedback regarding a student performance is provided to parents? So that parents know automatically that their individual needs are being met. So, whether it's a student who is struggling, or whether it's a student who needs enrichment, they'll know that, and I'm sure Dr. Callahan loved hearing the Pythagorean theorem, theorem being used as an example. But that was a good example, you know, that, that this parent would know, my student is on track where I think they should be because I know this is a difficult, challenging issue. So, I think what you've asked here is for our team to consider, how do we provide feedback with these new materials so that everybody understands that they're getting the, their different needs met for every student?
Well, I remember when Carolyn made the presentation-
Is that accurate?
Yes, because when Carolyn, you made the presentation, what, two or three years ago, and you said that you had put study guy, remember when you said that on my locker, on my, on mine, I, I, I put these information about this unit, and I had all of the examples, and I can remember that thing, what, what'd you do with it? And you would, you sent it to parents, parents could access it. It was like every single thing was clear-cut, you know, it was on School Loop, but they could access exactly what you were doing in that class and examples. I think that's really important that we, we let parents know.
Okay.
So, can I ask one, one more question? So, I want to ask Stephanie, how hard would it be to create a mechanism like that?
First, the materials, do you have parent supports built into each unit that can be, that parents can access and send home? There's a, you could access it now, there's a QR card that's been going around that has a link to parent, for each unit. And it has, since we don't want to kind of disclose to the students what the end goal is in a unit, it's sort of something that builds over time. It gives parents problems and things that they can talk about conceptually with their students for every unit. At the end of each lesson, there's also a summary page that summarizes what was discussed and what was found in class that day. And those can also be used to create discussions at home.
Interesting, because I have a seventh grader and I never got one.
That's with this new stuff.
With the new stuff.
It wasn't with the old stuff.
Yeah. Well, she piloted illustrative math.
Well, maybe they didn't do it with the pilot. Mrs. Blatt?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm glad you brought that up because I have a big concern, can't hear me? You can hear me without the mic.
They can hear you.
I don't know, yeah. I have to talk with a lot of teachers, mostly elementary, by the way. I don't think I've talked and, or spoken with, secondary. And they're concerned about the data collecting so that we know where we're at and, and all of that. Do we have data on our teachers on, because as a board, I think we have a responsibility, key to this, to support this staff to make sure that they're ready to teach this. Because I, we're hearing from a lot of teachers that they're drinking from a fire hose, number one, learning Common Core, adopting a new curriculum, and three curriculum, and, and it's really expensive. I mean, look at what we were doing, you know, since we started, you know, looking at the Common Core in 2010. I mean, if you look at the cost of just getting people in. So, do we, as a board, I mean, I've seen our budget, we are supporting teachers, but how do we ensure that they are ready for this? Because, you know, I'm, they're real, we're asking a lot. We want the data back. Even if they didn't get to that last chapter, we're asking them to test by the end of the year so we know where they're at, where their students are at also. And so, I'm really concerned that we, you know, I would just like to have that data, you know?
You're talking about elementary?
I, I, about, you know, when we're going into this new curriculum, do we know, or maybe this is a principal question, how does a principal know that their teachers are qualified to do this and that they don't need extra support? You know, and, and that's where we come from, because, you know?
They probably all need extra support.
That's how I feel. And, and we're talking about what we're doing, and I'm getting nervous, and I'm not teaching every day. So, you know, I mean, where, where's that support?
How about, Gabe is a elementary teacher and he's actually been teaching it to experience it. Do you have any comment on this?
So, we, do we support you at the district level?
Enough.
Enough.
Enough. Yeah, I know we do.
Good luck with that question. Yeah, good luck with that question.
The answer is yes, but it's a work in progress. So, we, we recognize that the shifts are ongoing. And with the curriculum, one of the things we're looking at is, Bridges has really highlighted for us some of the shifts, but we don't want to be completely dependent upon the materials. We want to have a really deeply rooted understanding of what the shifts mean. And so, we're trying to take a simultaneous approach or a parallel approach where we're making use of excellent materials that are available to us now, and we're understanding the three shifts within the Common Core. And we recognize that it's going to be a multi-year process, but we also see this, you know, from an elementary perspective, this is a fascinating exercise to look at what happens to our students as they move on into secondary, because we're not, you know, we, we aren't confident at an elementary level that we are ready to determine at sixth grade what the next six years of a child's math program is going to look like, just based on how they did at the end of, or in a, one single assessment at the end of sixth grade, which was, you know, kind of the system we've been using.
And you have the industry coming up with the guidelines and, that they want to see, and by the way, those are 15 years old. Though, you know, they've been saying that, you know, Business Roundtable's been saying that for, you know, 20 years probably, that we need, you know, thinkers and, you know, the people that can beat their way out of a paper bag. They may have a, you know, be amazing students, but, but they really are waiting to be told what box to check and, you know, what system to be done. And so, we know that, we've had that. So, that's all I'm, I'm, I really, I really want to make sure that we have a think tank or we have something that our teachers feel that it's okay to make a mistake, it's okay to take longer, it's okay, this isn't a judgment call, your data doesn't have to be perfect. If we have to throw more money at it, and I know Jeff's not here, so he can't defend himself, but we can, I, I think that we- himself, but we can, I think that we need to, at the same time we're doing this, support that teacher in the classroom and the principal.
And I'm, what I heard, what I heard was that, and I'm going to look at all, a nodding would help me on this one, sixth grade doesn't want to be the determiner of a child's mathematic career.
That's right.
So the new pathways sort of puts that burden on middle school and gives them that first year of high school to see, okay, you got it? You think you got it? You're sure you got it? Okay, now you're in high school. Do you like this? Because if you like this, you can go. We've got all this for you to do. You don't love it still, even though we've done all of these great things for you, you're still not loving it? Okay, well, then you can take the slower route. Am I right in saying that? Okay, I've got more nods. That makes me feel better. Because the new pathway supports that, that sixth grade doesn't have to make that decision. Okay. Mrs. Yelsey?
Yeah, a concern I have is, we talk about this being more rigorous all around, and we already know we have higher than we would want failure rate in math across the board. So are we setting ourselves up for more failure? I mean, how do you?
I would say no. I would say, you know, a hypothesis is, the failure rate in high school may be the result of not having a really solid, deep understanding of those K-8, of that K-8 content. And so I would say no, but once again, that's also building an understanding with the teachers of what math instruction looks like and what math learning looks like.
I can't help myself, so I have to comment on this, too. This also is that, you know, I believe that we've known that as well, you know. I mean, I think that, I think Common Core is going to make the shift, help the shift, because we're getting into depth of teaching, which a lot of other countries have been doing. I mean, you look at Tim's report, they've been doing it for over 20 years in science and math and the conceptual part. America has it. I mean, the United States, we moved up a notch because Minnesota and Florida took it on two years ago. So we, our test scores did go up. But, you know, so I think that you'll see that shift, because, you know, not only will our teachers start to grasp the conceptual part, but our students will as well. And I think they're, I think we're already seeing that from our third graders. We've been looking at them for the last three years, because they're getting the conceptual math. Stop me if I'm wrong, but I think it, I, you know, I've seen a change in my own household. So I think it'll actually help us.
Absolutely. I'm looking for the kids to get greater depth in what they're understanding. When I look at that chart of the eighth grade skills that they're supposed to have, it would be amazing if my calculus students could do all of those things.
That's right.
And I know that they cannot.
But they're capable. Don't you believe they are capable?
Learning, of course, but I don't know that all of them had taken the time for that to sink into their mind, that they kind of may went through some of those things too quickly, just to be able to check off the boxes that they got through all of it. So for me, I would much rather see them get that strong foundation.
Exactly.
And make it easier for learning when you get to the higher level stuff, rather than trying to just keep up all the time, because that's what a lot of them are doing. They're just scrambling to hang on.
That's right.
And that's unfortunate, when there's a number of kids that really do like math, but are shying away from it because it's just too hard.
It's too intense.
Too intense, yeah.
And too fast. I guess that's, I found it fascinating when you were talking about, there's been a, you know, that you talked about from the college and the university. I think we do a disservice by not communicating to our parents, what are the expectations? What are the college expectations that, you know, we're expecting every single kid to go into the university at this, at this level? And yet you said that half the kids in the calculus class at the university are not, don't have the basic, basic skills. And then Brandon, you just said, I wish my calculus kids had these basic skills, and they're lacking. Are we communicating, I mean, are we, then are you having to fill in the gaps?
My calculus class, am I having to fill in the gap?
Yeah.
I think that's with every course I've ever taught.
Okay.
Was that I had to take the kids, figure out where they're at when I get them, what skills do I need to kind of fix in order to keep going? And you discover those throughout the year. So it's not as if it's just the first day, and then I figure out what I need to do.
Right.
It's throughout the year. I'm figuring out, you know, a kid will go, I don't understand that. How did you get from point A to point B? And then I'll realize I need to go back and remediate something for them. But then at times, it's, sometimes can sometimes feel overwhelming, the amount of things I need to fix, if we want to say fix it.
Yeah. Well, I just.
I just think the point, we're talking about the same thing that Dr. Callahan, the point that you made, which is, it's not about compressing it, it's not about having, it's about not having so many, covering all the topics that are actually in that grade level. And I think a lot of the problem, I mean, other than we need to communicate to the parents just what they're getting, I think a lot of the problem is that parents want their kid in the highest class.
Race to the top.
Everybody wants their kid in the high class.
But there are also some kids that are ready and emotionally can handle it.
No, I agree, but I think.
I mean, they're not a large number, but there are some kids.
There are some.
And just as, just as we.
Go ahead.
No, just as we, for at-risk kids, spend a lot of time working with at-risk kids, I think we need to spend some time thinking about what we're doing for those kids.
Oh, I mean, I agree. I completely agree with you. There's going to be a group of kids that need, that can cover all this and still be wanting more. In fact, one of my questions was going to be, is there a problem with separating the kids, the little bit higher kids, other than not the parents wanting all the kids to be in the higher class?
Yeah.
You know, because the other one's dumbed down or something. They get that in their head.
Mr. Aschendorf wants to.
Oh, please.
You've addressed this before on your English program.
Pull the mic down.
And it's worked out very well.
Mic down. Grab your mic.
You addressed this before with your English program, and it's worked out very well, getting rid of honors tracks and going to one track. Why not do the same with math?
Exactly.
Now, for the special students that are gifted there, there are other things you can do. You can start AMC math competitions. In high school, you can do the math modeling competition. There are other things we can do. What you don't want to do is go back to the English-type approach of having two different groups. For example, I don't see honors listed here. Honors is death. That's how I look at it. And it's because the biggest revolution in education, new idea at least, the last decade, has been the impacts of the growth mindset. And Dr. Callahan was very nice today. He didn't give you all the data on how those wonderful kids are doing. They all have those enhanced classes. They're not doing that much better than regular kids.
Exactly.
And so you don't do them any favors putting them in an honors class, and you don't do the people that aren't in the honors class any favors either, because now those are, hey, they're smart people. Smart people, and to see honors kids means I'm a dumb kid.
Yeah.
Even though I'm smart, I must be dumb.
You're right. That's what I.
And so you're best off keeping them into one class. Now, the thing, though, is, back to your teacher's comment, that puts more of a strain on your teachers. It sure is nice having a nice class and a not-so-nice class, because my range of skills is more constrained. So it's easier on the teachers. But that's why you adopted this particular curriculum, IM, because it gives enough teacher support to be able to do that differentiation well. And it's taken a long time to get here. You went through the UCI materials, and then you had that breakthrough. An incredible achievement was when staff, the teachers, voted against Go Math, traditional stuff, and decided to go with whatever we can find that's better. And this is the apex of that process. And you should be very proud of that. Now, the trouble is, it is going to put more stress on the teachers, and that's a valid concern. Lots of ways of fixing that, I guess I shouldn't say this, but full-time TOSs, they could be used. Hint, hint, nudge, nudge. But anyway.
They don't want to give up their class.
You actually are in extremely good shape here. Keep the growth mindset in common and follow the coherent path of one main curriculum. And be happy.
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
Just because I appreciate Ms. Yelsey's point about, you know, that, you know, capable student or the student who is kind of above and beyond. From a growth mindset perspective, you know, tracking and putting kids in different label classes is just as damaging, I think, for that student. And, you know, the research shows that, but I can speak to it, because I was that kid who was always, you know, hyper-accelerated and all the honors, AP everything. And then when I got to college, and for the first time I got a C, I dropped out of engineering, because I was like, I can't do this. Like, I must not be as like great as like everyone thinks I am, you know? And that happens to our kids at Corona del Mar, for sure. They go off to college, and they're not ready. And then they have that like crazy crisis, and then they drop out. And so I think that part of what we communicate when we have these different tracks is kind of labeling kids in like a really negative way.
Well, I think that that's, from my point of view, that's, given all the circumstances that we've gone through this year, I am so very concerned about, and that's why I'm really thrilled about this. Yes, I know that we're going to get political pushback from parents who think that their kid is the greatest, but when we're really talking about it, we're talking about the mental health of our students. And we do not need to put more and more pressure on a race to the top, when in fact, if you look at this chart, it says you're going to get to the same place. And we are going to ensure, we are, we are, we are putting our stamp on this, and we're putting our faith and our confidence in our teachers, that this program will provide the necessary enhancements for their children to succeed wherever they are in the class, and whether they're at the bottom or at the very top and need to be pushed even farther, and they want to push themselves farther. Not their parents, but they self-select to go farther. That's, I think, is the critical. If they want to go farther, it's not their parents saying, well, be sure to take that. It's that they elect to do it, and that they can, and that it's embedded within the curriculum, and that we're providing that, and that we're slowing this process down. For God's sakes, let's get, let kids be, you know, let's let 12 and 13-year-olds go back to being 12 and 13-year-olds, pain in the necks. You know, they are pain in the necks. We love them, but they got a lot more going on than just math and school. That's a lot of issues. And so I am thrilled, and I think it's great, and I truly believe that we are on the right path, that that's the most is the, is that we want well-rounded students.
I'd like to just go back and make a point that the communication piece, the feedback piece, is critical, and I would like staff to consider that, because I think Mrs. Yelsey's right. We do have parents who will be concerned about whether their students are going along the path they want.
At every high school.
Well, at every grade level in every school. And I think we can, we can settle their concerns if they are receiving feedback on a regular basis. And, you know, and on the elementary schools, they had their math nights, where, and sometimes even had a math day where the parents came in and saw math being taught during the, during the day. It might be even proactive to, you know, share what's going to be up at the quarter in math once, once a quarter, so parents know what's going on. This is what you can expect if you have a greater need for more depth and breadth of the materials. This is how we're going to support students who may not have the skills, and we're all going to get, they're all going to get to this point basic, and then some kids will have more mastery, just because of their interests and talents, and so on. And I think that that communication piece is really, really critical. I also like to, you know, I thank Mr. Aschendorf for his creativity. And I think that's right, you know, we should seek out any opportunities for enrichment for those kids who want enrichment. And it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be separate from what we're, our base curriculum, but, you know, can it be outside the school day? Can it be in addition to? You know, there are a lot of kids who are not taking computer programming, but sure know how to program because they're, they're building robots. You know, and so Mesa's a good one, a good outside program. There are just so many different ones that can be, that can be used. So I think the feedback piece is something I'll ask staff to follow back on and see how we're going to keep parents in the loop about what's going on in the classroom and every student's progress.
Especially with this upcoming change. And Ms. Carr, my daughter experienced the same thing. She, you know, every honor, every, you know, valedictorian, and got to USC in engineering and was getting Cs and Ds. She didn't really understand math. She could tell you how to get every answer, but that's why I'm so excited about the way math is being taught now. So I completely, and she freaked out.
What? Okay, Mrs. Yelsey?
Yeah, I just have, since we have such an illustrative audience, can we ask?
They're sitting in the back of the room, too.
Would you like to make a comment?
Does anybody want to make a comment?
Appreciated the nods.
Yeah.
They're all there, back there in the back. Come on, don't be shy.
I mean, we appreciate what you have to say, because you're right there with the kids.
Oh, my gosh.
Nobody.
Should we just call on, just leave the teachers, just call on them?
No, no, that's not fair.
Pop quizzes? No, we're not doing that. Doctor?
I'm just shocked that Rich Rodriguez doesn't have something to say.
I want to know who was planning graduation.
Okay, here he goes, he's coming up.
It's nice under the bus, it's cool.
I've got a couple of follow-up comments when somebody gets brave enough to come up to the microphone. I've got a bet here of who it's going to be, but.
Okay.
So a couple of follow-ups on, you know, what does the professional development look like for our staff, you know, and how can a school board support that? And I think Gabe hit the nail on the head well when he's talking about, you know, his ability to work with his teachers, and it's an ongoing process. We have to realize that. There is no silver bullet, but it's going to take hard work. We're going to have to roll up our sleeves. And really, the old teaching style of the stand-deliver has shifted to teacher as the facilitator. And the best thing that we can do as a school site is continue to find opportunities for our teachers to communicate, to plan together, to work together, to develop lesson plans that they're going to do together, reflect upon, and refine. I think we're doing a better job than that than ever with our late starts, as well as our teaming. Coming off of the middle school pilot, it was so refreshing and fun to watch them work together and hear those conversations. And their teaching, I guarantee it, got much better, because of the discussions that we were able to facilitate on the school site, and then come to the board level or at the boardroom and work with Brandon and others, and start to have our conversations. And you really start to see the power of our own expertise and what we're doing, just by hard work, is really showing growth. So that can't be overlooked. So just that opportunity of our bell schedules to be able to build in our own professional development and teaming to work together is extremely important. Another point is.
Except for Ensign and Kiwinkle. I'll just put that plug in the back.
Well, I know they have, they have late start time. I know, talking to Mike, going through. The other thing is, we're not alone. Dr. Callahan pointed out that, hey, this is eight years old, and we've all been waiting, and I've been waiting eagerly for eight years for great materials to come out to support the Common Core. We're not alone. I mean, we had the luxury, a lot of us up here, we got to go to Washington DC and have a national conversation. And we're not alone. And in fact, when we went to look into kind of tracking and, you know, going through the consideration of taking away, the majority of people who were in the room were from California. So we flew all the way around the country, and we had conversations with most people who were from California. And we looked at some of the San Francisco data, they're four years out, and two things were noticeable on their data set. One was more kids than ever are getting the calculus than before they started. And then the second is, they used to have a 43% remediation in Math 1, and now they're 8%. So more kids are getting to the final, and more kids are being successful all along because of their intentionality, to make sure that students are working with each other, they're learning from each other, teachers are working together, and it's all kind of meshing together to create this positive math K-12 experience, which I applaud our district for doing, so.
Since I work most closely with the Corona del Mar area, I don't want to put her on the spot, but Dr. Gogel, would you just come up and give your perspective of what you've seen so far?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for listening to all of our comments this afternoon. And I have to say that I am a huge fan of the math department at Corona del Mar Middle School. And I'm sitting next to one of my favorite fan members, and we are thrilled to have illustrative as our curriculum. So let me start by saying that across the board, even my teachers who are a little bit on the veteran side, are super excited about the new curriculum and how well it matches the innovative changes. So we are thrilled about that. We also, also, we've made a commitment at CDM, in fact, several years ago, to not have any honors courses at all. And I think we're unique as a middle school in that respect, that we're And I think we're unique as a middle school in that respect, that we have zero honor courses in any content. So we have had our genius groupings across the board. In math, the only anomaly we have is the enhanced class. And that's for a handful of students that Karen did speak to that have the ability to work at a quicker pace potentially. The illustrative curriculum, we haven't implemented it completely yet. So we'll need to work through it to find out, to discover the depth that we can go into that curriculum with some of our more advanced students. I know some of our sister middle schools have multiple pathways, multiple levels of courses in various content areas. We've already made the commitment to back away from that. And I know that our middle schools across the board are looking into that as well. So as we move forward, I think the one thing that I can echo that I've heard board members speak to already is the parent concerns that are flooding our emails, flooding our voicemails, and flooding us as we try to make it from point A to B on a campus. So I certainly can understand that parents do have a need for communication and a need to understand really the, the heart of what we're speaking to. And so that will be something that is a journey, as far as a big picture, we'll need to, as we launch, have lots of communication with our parents in addition to the follow-up, regular feedback that Dr. Navarro was referencing and that Stephanie spoke to so articulately. So right now, at this point in time, what I'm hearing is my parents don't understand where this is coming from. And I feel like it is my job to help them understand, is my job to serve all of our kids, all of those learners, including the, the few that come from each feeder school that are ready to do some more advanced coursework. But also, I feel like the biggest job is educating the parents as to what the program is that we're providing to their children. Because as a parent, you're scared when things change and you don't know why.
Right.
So that's really where we're at in the communication piece.
We did that once. We, we implemented this one without adequate parent support. And all of the engineer parents went, I didn't do math this way. And I became, and, and they're right, they didn't. And we learned, so that's a good thing.
But I, I know that, you know, we are, we believe in the process. We believe in the, the expertise that surrounds me on both sides. And given specific talking points, I am willing and able to educate my community, given the opportunity to do so.
Yeah. Key.
Mrs. Blatt.
Yeah, I was going to ask Dr. Navarro, I know we have several, I want to put those principals on the spot, but we have several schools that hosted a math night. And, you know, kind of doing it just to see how.
Elementary?
Well, how the parents responded to it. Because, you know, I attended one in a different district and it was, the kids, basically, the students led the math lesson that they had learned the month before. And, and they prepared a presentation for their parents and, and myself, it's all the parents, we were like, we have second graders, you know, explaining why the train left the station and how they, you know, and we were, you know, really, and I was with a grandparent who just, he was just bowled it over. But the kids were very articulate and it's part of one of the Common Core standards about collaboration and being able to explain. I mean, it was all right there. And so I'm just curious if any of the principals out there did host a parent night? If you want to come up and, you know, just share? Because I, I don't know if we have to support these schools in order to, you know, make them happen, but I think it would be great to, you know, get a feedback about it.
Quick and easy, easy. How many of you hosted a math night? There we go. Okay.
No, no, I know.
Thank you. A lot. So I mean, I attended four.
Good afternoon, everyone.
A brave soul.
On behalf of my friends and colleagues, I think just about every elementary school had at least one math event. And they were well-attended, students were the superstars, parents were in awe of what their youngsters were learning. And that has been a great way to start having parents get a little bit more on board. They're starting to understand the area model, the mysterious area model. And, and now, as we're talking about this secondary piece, one of the things that stands out for me, and I imagine it may also stand out for a number of other principals in the room, is knowing that our sixth grade teachers are not, by and large, are not math specialists. That's not their training. And they're, they're amazing and they're teaching.
Tough stuff.
Language arts. They're, you know, reading and writing and math and social studies and science, et cetera, et cetera, throughout the day. Their, their focus is all over the place. And I feel that it's imperative that we look at how we can really support them well. Because as you all know, they want to do an amazing job. And Dr. Callahan was just talking about middle school and its importance in all of this. And if we have teachers who are at a different level in their conceptual knowledge, et cetera, it's going to be really hard for them to do the best possible job preparing our sixth graders to go on to seventh grade. So I'd love for us to think about how we can best support them.
I agree.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you win your bet? Okay, I'm, I'm going to call on Mrs. Florbet. It is 2:56, so we need to.
This is real quick, and I just want to make sure that I'm real clear on this. So starting in 2018-19, as Mrs. Gogel said, Dr. Gogel said, that they only have one, they have two levels, basically, Enhanced Math and Math 7. But she indicated that there are, there are other schools, there are other middle schools that have multi, multiple levels of math. So are we, I want to be real clear. So as of 2018-19, we will have math for all incoming seventh graders. It will be Math 7. For those students who were in Enhanced Math 7, 8, eighth, those, those eighth graders for 2018-19 will have Math 1. How many classes is that? Just, just curiosity of how many are we looking at? How many, is that, Costa Mesa has one? You have three Enhanced Math, so you'll have three classes next year potentially? Okay.
Enhanced?
Yeah.
We have three.
Three Enhanced Math and how, where's.
It fluctuates between two and three.
Okay, and T-Winkle is not. T-Winkle has one. Okay, so we're talking about seven, right? One, 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 two, eight. Okay. Okay, but everybody else, there won't be any basic math class? There won't be any math A, B, whatever? It's all Math 7?
The struggling students will have a support class. That's an elective, one of their elective periods. They'll have their regular class. And then the schools have agreed in our meetings to have, ones that need extra support have a support class in addition to their math class.
Okay. Perfect, okay. Now, is that, do we have to vote on that? Are you putting that on the?
No, no, this was a study session, so.
No, I, I'm not saying now. But that's sort of a change in.
We'll go through the regular approval process on the curriculum on that one. So it'll come to you before John. But John will bring it to you for approval of the curriculum or the courses of study.
So this, this, this thing.
Yeah, it'll be part of the courses of study.
So you're going to study, the, the.
No, but.
Steering committee is going to study this part next year. They have been studying.
Yeah, for, for commitments to the actual decisions that we made for the high school pathways, that's our study over the next six to eight months.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Our recommendation, coming back to you, would be for middle school.
So you're, so you're coming back at the next board meeting? It will be on the agenda to adopt that, beginning in 2018-19, that, that all incoming sixth graders will be in, placed in Math 7. Incoming seventh graders will be placed in Math 7. Math 78. Math 7. 7.
Yeah, we'll submit that as the course of study for seventh grade.
I have a quick question to anyone who knows, probably Dr. Callahan. The SAT has already changed. The ACT, is it scheduled to change? Because I know that one of the workarounds for a lot of students that were very linear and calculators took the ACT instead of the SAT.
The ACT claims that they're already more aligned than the SAT was, so they didn't need to adjust as much.
Okay, what do you think?
But I think actually now with the new revisions that the SAT made, the SAT is a little closer. So I don't know strategy-wise whether it really makes a big difference, one or the other.
Thank you, I just wanted an expert.
Okay, so just so I can make sure that I'm communicating accurately to our team here, three points, feedback, okay? A feedback mechanism for our parents to make sure that they understand what a progress that their students are making. We need to support our teachers and make sure they enhance their foundational knowledge of all of the standards and, and the underlying math concept around it, as well as plan together on how to deliver the lessons effectively.
We just don't want them suffering in silence.
Right.
We need to help them sooner than later.
Yeah, we'll get them together and they can suffer in a group.
And don't forget the sixth graders.
Yes.
Sixth grade teachers.
Yes, yes.
And Dr. Navarro, how, the meeting tonight for parents, there is a meeting tonight for parents?
Yes, there is a meeting tonight.
How is that communicated to the parents?
Mr. Drake?
In several ways. So we, we sent a flyer out via email.
To every parent.
To every parent that we have an email for. And then we asked all of the sites to send home a voicemail, however, is that through Blackboard, I believe, promoting the evening. And then it's been on websites and all of those.
Okay, I have one last point, and that is that the team look on how to embed enrichment for those students who need enrichment. Similar to the point you made about our students who need support, we need to figure out a way to support those students who need enrichment opportunities.
She said that it's already embedded, it's sort of how to enhance it to.
Right. But I think what we want to do is highlight it and, and communicate it as much as possible so that it's there. And then maybe there are outside opportunities on top of that, as Mr. Ashendorf mentioned. So I would like the team to think about how they, we might more formalize that and structure it so that it becomes systemic instead of just cap-hazard.
On your supporting teachers, will you asterisk, please, the sixth grade teachers? Because they are not just teaching math all day. So they need, not every teacher is going to quote, "need the help in the math comprehension", but it certainly isn't going to hurt. And the, the one teacher on your campus that doesn't need would be the one that turns around, becomes a TOSE without being a TOSE. So sixth grade teachers are teaching nine subjects, so that extra one is not the same as the single subject.
So I've already made the shift to six, seven, eight.
In your brain?
In my brain. So I make sure that, as we talk now, it's, we're thinking six, seven, eight. So they are included in that, in that same.
But it's going to take a different, it's going to need to take a different support because, because the secondary, the seven, eight, seven through 12 math teachers aren't teaching English, social studies, science.
No, they have math degrees.
Right.
Yeah, so I understand that.
Okay.
And, and of course, we will have more meetings when, as I've assured people, we will, will have another meeting when school starts or just before. But we wanted to get this information out to parents as soon as the ones that want to know just right now.
One of, one of our things to do between the end of this meeting and our parent meeting this evening is sit down with Dr. Callahan and, and look at the calendar through October, the schedules sometimes.
This meeting's been recorded, correct? So this meeting will go up so that parents can reference this for some information if they weren't there tonight. And.
Or today.
The PowerPoint is very informative.
It is. Okay, any, anybody want to make any other comments?